All hands, before we go any further, we are going to start with talking prayer. Talking prayer. Our nation, tell the truth. Uh, that is nice. Our nation, can you give us talking prayer, please? Okay. Sister Noela, where are you hiding? Okay, Sister Noela, this lady mine, and give us talking prayer, short one, not a mass, but a evening mass.
All hands, IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
Oh, Mama, Chuku Oki Kabiama.
Isay.
Oh, Mama, Chuku Oki Kabiama.
Isay.
Oh, Mama, Chuku Oki Kabiama.
Isay.
Oh, okay. I need you, Noela, for that today. I now say, oh, excuse me. We are asking Chuku Oki Kabiama to give us the grace, the courage, to know why we are here. To understand really why we are here. We are asking Chuku Oki Kabiama to give us understanding. For us, each and every one of us, to know why we are here. And we go forward to pray our prayer in that. That Chuku Oki Kabiama have been so gracious to him and to us by keeping him alive today and continue to protect him. We also pray for all his family members. We also pray for GOS and nature, we all those who are the reason why we are still here today. We ask Chuku Oki Kabiama to give us the grace to thank him. To say thank you every day because for the past four years counting, nobody, you and me, will not believe that IPOB will not perish and go away as they wish. But the enemies have failed more freely.
Isay.
We have every opportunity to thank God every day. With these and those who are not able to voice ours, we ask Chuku Oki Kabiama, in his name we have prayed.
Thank you very much, our sister Noela. I love her very much. Uh, at this moment, we will introduce the people at high table. Yes? Okay, let's drop the protocol. Let's go to national anthem first, after that we do the introduction. Can we all stand up, please, and sing our national anthem?
Land over rise is so we are a cherry. We love the land of our heart with the rose. We must be great, our hearts shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all the fools. But with that right is held for all your dead. Then let us die in our fair share of him. When you may have found what's in red and the shine. Oh, Father, this be our soul and bread. If ever did it shall be my name. The living stone that bridge in mortem did free. Shone as big, our heart will live at thee. We wish not a match triumph at from this open. And through the cruz, see poor or sickly pass. Where we are born, thou wouldst our blood to him. Wish I be men, I know to thy demand. Then shall I walk, let him run, so far. Oh, victory, we shall all night alone. Oh, protect us from the evil storm. Let all our blood, let the spirit, our strength. Give us the strength to give that love and restore. To give our blood, to cast the lost in chains. Let go to root, to sound with red to death. To make his life, I am no fighter's stance.
All hands.
Yaphra.
All hands.
Yaphra.
All hands.
Yaphra.
Please, can we go for two minutes silent? We are starting now.
Mubanyu no, and no go. Ona tutu, kwa i kwaree Chuku. Baina bosso, ne we oni, na nganando. Machuku nare genduke, cheso okonuki. Machuku nare genduke, cheso okonuki. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Oh, bruna madendo, ngani siya na ye pretend. Oh, bruna madendo, ngabuwa eke pi yafra. Machuku nare genduke, cheso okonuki. Iwe re sorondiro de kusiumundeki. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao. Chetawpi kwaree yao.
May their souls find rest in the bosom of Chuku Oki Kabiama.
Isay.
May anybody who has had in their life, by killing them in any way, shape or form, may they never find rest.
Isay.
To their hungry generation to come.
Isay.
Until there are no more to suppress behalfers.
Isay.
In the name of Chuku Oki Kabiama, the prayer.
Isay.
All hands.
Yaphra.
All hands.
Yaphra.
I'm going home. Yeah. I'm going home. I'm going home. I'm going home. We see, I may wash wash it, leave it, to Ghana he check matter. Yeah, wodi, IPOB United Kingdom family. I'm going to any aga naka, na hoo.
You can't go to the airport. 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 Oh, yeah. You can't go to the airport. I mean, you know, I'm back. I got a couple of rules for you.
Say.
I think I'm wrong. Wait, wait. We're not. You're not gonna. What potato? You just put on my music. It's in the morning. Say. I'm not. It's good. I'm young. I'm young. I'm young. More than. You know, you mean, they're. I got a chip. I got a. I had to go to the airport.
Say.
Oh, I'm going to go to the airport. 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 I think I'm coming. I like. I think I'm. I told me. He won't. I said, I hear. Bruno, he gave Bruno's. I'm a person. The chief. Yeah, for. The. Oh, they love them all. I'm a tomato. They're good. Now, my baby. And he will put her. Subana. I'm a mom. Nobody can. I'm a guy. I mean, they don't have a beer. A girl. I found. Now, I'm. Now, I see her. Yeah, they are. I'm a man.
Say.
I'm a mom. I'm the chief. You know, they're here. I'm a man. See how bad I'm a man.
Say.
I'm a mom. I'm going to the airport. I'm going to the airport. See, I think. Oh, my name is. They're a lot more. My work. I'm sorry. I mean, they. You can not. I'm.
Say.
I'm a man. I'm going to the airport. So, my name. They may be the chief. They may wait. Okay. And yeah. My car. Oh, my roof. He had more. Go so. You can get. I'm hungry.
Say.
I mean, I'm a guy. My gala. Oh, my rules. I'm a lady. I have to go to the airport.
Say.
I'm a woman. I'm a woman. I'm a chicken. I'm a chicken. I'm a chicken. I'm a girl. 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 You can buy it. I'm a girl. 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 I'm a potato. I'm a potato. Oh, my name is. I'm a woman. I'm a man. I'm a woman. I'm a woman. They're now. They're a woman. Oh, no. You're a zero. You're a zero. No, yeah.
Say.
They're a baby. I'm a zero.
Say.
No, I'm a zero.
Go. Say.
I'm a chicken. I'm a zero.
Say.
I'm a chicken. I'm a zero.
Say.
I'm a chicken. I'm a chicken. I'm a zero.
Say.
You want to do that? Ah. I put a lamp. I love them. I love them. I love them. No. Did you hear? Did you hear? Did you hear? Did you hear? I'm a girl. 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 Here you go. Oh, two. Okay, she's there. I will ignore. You're also carrying the hand. As apologies. Let me revert to English. The next on the agenda of intuency is the UK National Coordinators. The address. Which is normally and. Stay worship. Eight minutes. Our country. The distinguished guests of honor. Only to us. Nam de Kano. In spirit here with us. Our special guest of honor. Our H O D. My Zichika. Those here. Our father of the day. And European rep. My Zostin. Oku. Abanim. Our deputy European rep. My Zaza Yoba. Our mother of the day. Our own special I P O B first lady. And only this wife. Lola. Who she gave me. I am a woman. Oku Kano. Our. One, my Z. I'm a big kid. Oku Kano. I'm a guy. Oh, I'm a tear from that. All other national coordinators here present, starting with our formidable German national coordinator. My Z College. She do. Deputy Italian family. My Z K Chuk. And all others, please forgive me if I don't go around with the whole circle. We're trying to save time. Not forgetting. Our own member of D O S and former UK national coordinator. My Z Doctor Justice. Okachi Lawrence. All of that protocols duly and respectfully observed. Normally, I send my speeches or address also via our platforms. So I would do exactly that, especially today to save time. I want to just make a couple of remarks from that speech. The first is that last year. And by the way, this will mark the fourth annual general meeting of I P O B UK consecutively, nonstop, since twenty twenty two. Last year, we had all our special guests here. The holy father of the day, mother of the day, join us virtually, that is via Zoom. This is the first time we are having all of them physically present with us.
Yeah. 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 I P O B. One family.
That in itself is a statement, a bold one. It's remarkable in the sense that it is coming at a time. Where in the United Kingdom here, we made a declaration, end of last year, a prophetic declaration for that matter. That twenty twenty five will be, and it is, our year of positive transformation.
Say.
A lot has happened. So much water has gone under the bridge in our quest for restoration of the Africa. But in all those, we glean from the experiences of the past and make a resolve to move forward. It is a clarion call for each and every one of us to search our consciousness, because we definitely have, as we are friends who have conscious. Have some introspection. It would be good to get a mirror here. Place the mirror in front of you. Look at the man or the woman in the mirror. And say to yourself, I'm talking to the man or woman in this mirror. Talk to him or her in sincerity of purpose. About their involvement, commitment, dedication, honesty in this mission we are. Do it as often as you can. And when you get a voice, a quiet steam voice, often representing to Okachi, they are speaking. Take notes and walk accordingly. Because every time we are preaching, it's like you're preaching to the combatant. But the result doesn't actually show that. A very straightforward person cannot lie to you. You then might be a liar to myself. We must make positive transformation for this year. This A G M is coming, the very first weekend in the second half of the year. Often in sports, football in particular. You don't win any match by result of the first half. Matches are won mostly in the second half. This is our time to win. We have won. It is for us to claim that victory. And there is no going back. Therefore, we move and we cannot be moved. I P O B.
One family.
Can we give a round of applause to our nation? Thank you, my close nation. Please, may I intercall upon the. I P O B worldwide head of directorate of state. No, sorry. To call on the European rep, my Z Austin Abadim, to speak to us. Please, can we give you my awful opportunity? Thank you. I P O B.
One family.
I P O B.
One family.
One family.
I P O B.
One big family.
I P O B.
There were no much in it.
There were.
I want to start by greeting our leader, Mazinam De Kano in absentia. And fire with Sir Fubau. The man who called us at the right time. And we have been here and going nowhere. So we want to pray that wherever he is put, we can supportate him and guide him. And that his freedom will be very imminent.
Say.
I want to thank our H O D. My chicken. And the man who carries a very heavy load but doesn't show it. And he's, he's very, very formidable and very, very resilient. So we have to draw strength from his leadership style. He is preaching what, doing what he's preaching, and he is also leading by example. I am a witness. I want to thank my lead, my deputy, my Zaza Yoba, for his wonderful work in Europe with me. And if Europe is doing well, he's not only my strength. As he have been here, so somebody is behind me and beside me. So I'm now working alone. So Europe is going to continue to remain the cornerstone of this drug until the Afra is restored.
Say.
I want to thank the national coordinator, the host of this particular event. And his executive for the wonderful work that they've been doing in the UK. I want to ask them to continue doing that great job until the Afra is restored.
Say.
I want to thank the Doctor Justice. Okachi Lewis. And the man who came at the right time and steadied the ship when it was nearly collapsed two years ago. So your work is here to stay. But you can bless you abundantly.
Say.
I want to thank our leader's wife, Lola Jechi Oku Kano. And the woman who was the secret of Nam De Kano's strength. If you hear that Nam De Kano is a prophet, he has a prophetess at home as well. Lola, thank you for the great work and support. We appreciate you a lot. I want to thank the UK I P O B family members, both coordinators and principal officers of, at all levels. And the work we have been doing is very, very obvious to the leadership of I P O B. And UK is very pivotal to the restoration of Yafra, because it is the cradle of I P O B. We started here and we are going to celebrate Britain, the UK as well.
Say.
The enemies started in the UK destroy I P O B. And because of the resilience, because of the tenacity, because of the unmatchable commitment to the restoration of Yafra. We have remained triumphant to date. There is still a lot to be done in the UK. And by that, we'll be a matter of another day. UK is still facing a lot of challenges, because the enemies have not given up. Though defeated, they are still fighting like a wounded lion. But we are here to tell them that we are not going back. We have crossed the Rubicon. UK must stand strong and reclaim its position in Europe and in the world.
Say.
I want to encourage all of you to continue to support the national coordinator. And whoever that is a coordinator of every unit and every zone in the UK need your support. That support is not only by mouth, but by action. And in I P O B, what we do, what makes you a member, is your presence in the meeting, your contributions, both physically and both financially. These are the things that make you a member. If you are a member of I P O B and you don't attend meeting physically and you don't contribute financially, then you are not with us. It is a voluntary organization. But we are voluntary because of the reasons why the I P O B was formed in the first place. Our house is on fire in Yafra land. And it is only us in the diaspora that Chukokabama has called to head this movement. To make sure that we are standing strong for those who are at home and those at home are standing strong for us. We have children, a lot of children in the diaspora, born to Yafra families. If Yafra is not restored, those children can never go back home. If I am no more tomorrow, my children will not go back home, because they have no reason to go home. They were not born in Yafra land, as they're born in our cheap. They will stay where they know their friends, their colleagues, and those, their neighbors. Unless you take them home, they'll drink water from Yafra land and stand barefoot on the sand of Yafra. That's when there will be a rebirth and initiation to the land and the spirit of our ancestors. So it is, the onus is upon us all to work assiduously, even more than we have done so far, to ensure that Yafra is restored at all cost. Because nothing is greater than freedom, true freedom, and not freedom of life and freedom of mouth. It is freedom that is physical, freedom that allows you to make determination, to make decision for your country, for your land. And to serve with dignity, with commitment and patriotism. So UK will have to stand up and take that place again as the cradle of I P O B. And where we started and where we are going to celebrate the most when we are first restored. All hail Yafra. Thank you very much, our European rep, my Z Austin Abadim. Ladies and gentlemen, the next person to speak to us is. Mama, mama, be this so. We don't get another one.
Mama, mama, be this so.
Mama, mama, be this so. We don't get another one.
Mama, mama, be this so.
Who she can't know.
Mama, mama, be this so.
Long who she can't know.
Now, mama, be this so.
Mama, mama, be this so. We don't get another one.
Mama, mama, be this so.
Oh, more Yafra.
Now, mama, be this so.
Oh, more I P O B.
Now, mama, be this so.
All hail Yafra.
I P O B.
One family.
I P O B.
One family.
One family.
I P O B.
One family.
I P O B.
All hail.
Yafra.
All hail.
Yafra.
Yafra.
Freedom.
Yafra.
Freedom.
It will not work. I'm not a joke. But thank you, thank you, everyone. And I really want to appreciate you for being here. First of all, I want to say thank you to the UK national coordinator, Mazinaiz, and Mazie Azaya Uba. Mazel tov and our H O D. Nabi Kim has looked so much forward to see you today. So he's going to have a conversation with you later. Thank you, everyone else who I'm not able to mention your name, but thank you. Your presence here means a lot, because without you, there is no freedom, there is no Yafra, there is nothing, we have nothing. And I had so much to talk about, but when I got here, I said, no. Um, the program here says a message. So I would draw from our mama's prayer. She reiterated what she was praying about understanding. And I thought, hmm, that's it. And that is how the spirit of God works. It works in tandem. So where the spirit of God is, there is no confusion. The same message God gives to this person, he gives to that person, and he gives to about three different persons. May not be the same message, but if you follow the pattern, you'll see that he's trying to tell you the same thing. So mama kept pointing at really, really understanding why we gather. And it's very, very important, because sometimes we do things on the surface. And for those of us who are very deep in what we do. It, it can be straining, it can be strenuous, it can be, it can be very, very painful when you walk with people and they don't understand what they're doing. So, E, most of us here are Christians. It's also very important that the scripture did say, get everything that you need to get. Get knowledge, get wisdom. Make merry, do whatever you want to do, but in everything that you do, you must find an understanding in what you do. Because with understanding, you are able to identify your perceptions and whatever analysis. You can draw analysis from your point of view, but if you understand what you're doing, then it would make a lot of things easier. And I want to thank. The D O S, but I want to start from the head, to trickle down to the rest of them. As Mazie mentioned, Mazie Duzim is carrying so much. Uneasy lies the head. Where's the plan? It is not easy. At some point, I would explain something that Mazie Duzim had to bear as well at some point, but not today. So I had to scribble something which is very, very important. And I like to draw analysis from several parts of life, and that is why I call myself being a some plastic and eclecticist. As people, we are. We are not loved, yet we are needed. And it's for a purpose. We are very, very special people. And that is why we have been targeted. And a lot of us don't know how much targeted we are. I see most of our people still talking about, oh, evil presidency and all this nonsense going on. They don't know how much we are sat upon, that there are powers that be that sit on us particularly. And if we understand that, then we will come together to decimate these forces. And. Mazinam De Kano, when he started I P O B, because he's a man who reads a lot, and I'm sure he's drawn so many analyses from history. And somehow, history always repeats itself. So for the forces going around seeking for the destruction or the pulling down of the tensile strength of I P O B, which is the leadership. When he was taken. It's always the plan, take him and then the I P O B destroys. This is one movement that they have never seen before, and it scares them. In seventeen ninety eight, the United Irishmen Organization, when it was pulled together. To stand against the, against the British force. They were doing that to bring everyone together, the religious, different religious sect, different families, different, you know, um, kind of people. In Ireland, to stand against the British government or the British force. It would have worked, but because the significant leaders were taking. And because.
You're a fan.
Do you? I'm not, I'm not even going back. Everything that I do, when I do them. Okay, I think it sounds better.
Yes.
Oh, no, don't that, did you hear everything I said before? Thank you, thank you. Um, thank you. So, like I was saying, I just wanted to draw the importance of having a centralized leadership. Had there been one such as I P O B structure as we have presently, the Irishmen would have stood against the British force as of then. But because it wasn't there. They picked the leaders and the whole flock started scattered. And that's the plan the enemy has for us. It is not about Nam De Kano, it's about us as a people. And Nam De Kano being the, the voice and the face, he is help, but they are telling us. They're giving us a message that it is about you people. You are not allowed to stand. You're not allowed to go, because we need you. So when you don't understand, it doesn't mean, does this, is it, I can't remember this president who talked about the man in the arena. So you are in the arena, just like footballers playing. You know, when you're watching football, you're going, ah, missing one, no, this, kick, kick. You're shouting from where you are going, kick, oh, look at that guy, he missed the ball. You're drawing everything, because you're from the, you're on the outside. But if you go on the field, you probably won't even know when they, when they kick the ball, you should know, you know? You know? So it is not easy. Then it is also okay, because it just doesn't have the football coach who is coaching the people. There are other people also coming around the coach. So it's important that if the leadership is doing something that you do not like, he draw to their attention quietly. Because the enemies are watching, the enemies are waiting for our, for, ah, they will be so happy. And that is why, as long as I breathe, as long as I stand, I will stand with the leadership. Because, because what the enemy wants is to destroy our legacy. Because it is, it is also a statement made in person. Oh, Nam De Kano, you think, oh, we'll deal with you. And when you want to deal with someone, what you do, you destroy the things that they have. You destroy their legacy. So as long as, and it's a reason that I always come with Nabi Kim. If you noticed, that wasn't happening before, but it's for a purpose and it's a message. So if we continue to work alongside each other, to hold what we have. It is the love that you have that makes man to fight for his land. You, you have a land, why not? If somebody comes and says, I want to take your land, so take, take, knock yourself out and have a land. But it is for the love of what you have that you protect that thing. So for the love that we have for our people, for the children back home, kids who can't even, some of them don't know what is going on. They just wake up and they, they just leave. Not a good life. No good water for them, no good light, no light, nothing, no road, no proper. You see these children, they just wake up looking for what to eat. And it breaks my heart all the time. And sometimes you want to help a few. You don't need them, they're happy there. There is so many. So that is why coming together is of strength. And the enemy knows that, ah, it has us divided, of course, we can't stand. So they always fight along that side to break that strength. So our message today is please to gain understanding of why we are members of I P O B, why we're here. the importance and significance of a centralized leadership. Then I, I tell you now, you know, when the ship scatters, it just, there's confusion everywhere. And that was how the United Irishmen failed in seventeen ninety-eight. There's nothing anybody can do about it. But we have suffered so much. We have gone through so much. And now there seems to be a light. There seems to be some sunshine that we would see when we walk out through this tunnel. There seems to be this silver lining in the gray clouds. And some people want to bring it down. No, we refuse. And that will stand on to the Nambikana conference. They will come out. They will come out because victory is ours. You can see the Kenya court, you can see the Nigerian court, they've done their bit. There is no case. But because we are targeted. But we are very resilient people. I used to imagine all our men coming out in multitude and how not one fool like me can stand us. They can't. I've always asked Onyendu, have you ever seen where Onyamusana go boxing, walking? So upon our, you know, nose. And we fought for three years with nothing. Disregard the tool that they used against us, which is famine, hunger. But we are men of steel. We are strong. We are strong in physical form. We are strong in our mind. And we are strong spiritually, which is where we approach of. Even our national anthem, everything we do seeks to draw strength and direction from God. So at some point, I knew we would all come together, but I pray we don't behave like the Israelis where they had to fight from their side. After Boshichah, I saw they had to invade back. I wouldn't want us to invade because we have a lot of people back home and we need to protect them. God bless you all. IPOB!
One family!
IPOB! You go?
Welcome. Thank you for speaking to us. Um, next person that will speak, please, can you hold that mic? So next on that. Nabi, Nabi Kama wanted to speak to us. Can we give him a round of applause also?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
It's good to see you here. Another IPOB meeting in another place. I like, I do like traveling to places. Um, it's good to be here, especially for releasing my dad. Um, if it weren't for you, I wouldn't even be here right now. So thank you, everyone.
There was, there was. IPOB!
One family!
IPOB!
One family!
One family!
IPOB!
Ladies and gentlemen, in Ibo land, in Biafra, they said, he who clapped Iroko III, tried to fetch firewood from it because he don't try to clap it every day. Each and every one of us here are blessed. You are all saints and we have highly privilege to be in the presence of our H O D, Mazze Chika.
Wow. Thank you so much. Please, take a seat. Biafra!
Freedom! Freedom!
Biafra!
Freedom!
Freedom!
Biafra!
IPOB!
One family!
One great family!
IPOB!
Ekenemwo, everybody, from here, one, yarom, yarom. It's a great pleasure to be here in your midst today. Um, honestly, uh, this is my first time of coming to the UK. Um, for Biafra, we can do anything.
Yes, sir.
And I know that I have to be here. I have to be here because I have been embarking on different tours among the families in Europe specifically. And when I go, I have always one message for them. Uh, first of all, Ekenem, for a safe journey to this very land. And for all of you who have come from different locations and different places, that you arrive well and safe, and they will guide you back to your destination. Um, Mrs. Kano, I'm meeting our first lady for the first time as well.
Wow!
You know, when Onyendu started this very movement, he started it, probably he didn't realize what he was beginning. Um, but I know, there was a time I was speaking to somebody close to him. I told him, "Look, I have never been to any group whatsoever. I never joined groups. I never joined associations. But I heard Mazze Nambikana's voice, and then I began to, in fact, I was actually searching for issues relating to Biafra. And I saw where he was making a broker. That was in twenty twelve, twenty nineteen, twenty two thousand and nine, there about, when the other Igbo bars were around, so. And I had his voice. And then I went in and have a talk, a conversation with him myself. And something was revealed to me. And then I joined IPOB. I started, in fact, before the family became IPOB, really. I started to really get involved. And when somebody was, I was having a discussion with someone, I told him, "Look, this man has been called for this very mission. And because he is called for this mission, that is why I am becoming of participating in it for the first time in my life as a group." Therefore, I'm sure all of us differently. We, we heard his voice one way or the other. And we gathered in our millions. And, um, we had challenges that we had, and these very, very present challenges we are having. And you can see that the millions that gathered, how the people say, many are captured, few are chosen. The millions had dwindled to tens of thousands and now to thousands. But I'm very, very happy because these are the men that are also called to journey with Onyendu on this very, very project. And therefore, and Mazze Sun, to say in Ikejidan Kuruji, each of, each of you here today that has come for this very general meeting, uh, the rest are sure that those that Onyendu has left the running of this movement in their care, we are leaving no stone unturned to reach that destination for which IPOB was found, which in essence is a free, sovereign, and independent nation. Um, the message I gave to the family in Ireland last week, I told them that we must be ready next year. And the same message I bring to you today, IPOB families in United Kingdom. We must be ready. What do I mean by that, that we must be ready? We must be ready because already there is an unofficial war going on in the zoo, where in a space of a year, in a space of one year, more than six hundred thousand people have been killed. Whether they call it bandits or whatever, but six hundred thousand. And then you look at Ukraine. They have been fighting for two years or more now. And you look at the number. And you, you can, if you look at the number, you will tell me whether Nigeria is in a war or not. But before that war is declared officially, that is why I said, and I'm giving you the message, that IPOB must be ready by twenty twenty-six. Because you are the only hope of our people. And if IPOB had not been there, our land would have been overrun by now. And I'm sure, um, very, very terrible things, more than we see, will have been happening in our land. Therefore, the men and women that have given up everything that man can refer to as comfort, those who are in our bushes, in our forests, deny themselves very normal square meal that we all take for granted, those who have made animals and insects their friends in the bush, the only support you can give them, or the only way you can assist them is to support them. Support them, and when we say support, this one is not by prayer. It is not by moral support. You must support them by non-shallow. I am being very, very direct and open and clear because what we are facing is not anything that prayer can solve for us. The Israelis are flying their fighter jets and going to Iran to engage in a war. They are not praying. And we know, uh, that those who have the desire, those who have the intention, those who have the plan to supplant us, to come and take over our heritage, the land of our ancestors, there will be blood if we all go into a church and begin to pray. Because then they will come with their AK-47 and the job will be easier done for them. I would not say what Onyendu already, Onyendu has already given the message. He gave me to people in, in, um, was it Texas or California, but in USA. When he met the Igbo, you know, the World Igbo Congress, excuse me. He met the World Igbo Congress and he told them specifically, directly, what we needed. He can count the time he gave them that message. And you can now observe what has been the attitude of our people. The same non-challenged attitude, the same Igbo way of doing things. But I have also learned to love my brother. Um, but asking Mulyana Hazel, certainly couldn't need it because of you. Because of you, because of the sacrifices that you have paid. And most especially, and most importantly, because of those who have died, those who laid down their lives. There are many of us here who are reincarnation of those who fought this very, this very first Biafra war, many of us. And those who have not reincarnated, they are still fighting with us in the spirit. What about you? What are you going to do? Are you going to stand or sit on the ground? Or are you going to take the bull by the horn? The IPOB director of Sid have decided to take the bull by the horn. I'm very happy that I have been here. We had made a conscious decision at the time, at the time our leader was kidnapped and renditioned to Nigeria. We made a conscious decision that we must keep these sheep of our struggle afloat. We must ensure that the train of our freedom does not stop on the way. And and I can tell you, the challenge with her has regaled our motivation and our dedication to this very struggle. Because, um, when Onyendu was arrested or kidnapped, I will tell you very honestly, I was, I was not ready. I was not prepared. None of us were clear. We actually didn't know what to do. And without, without gloating about it, we have restored whatever arsenal that was, or that we had thrown at the leadership to destroy the four main structures of this movement. We overcome all of them and I can assure you that each and every one of these structures are strengthened and more stronger than four years ago. are strengthened and more stronger than four years ago. Fellow Biafrans, lovely IPOB family members, as from uh, Roko Badron. I'm sure, I'm very certain that there is none of us here who has not understood the precariousness of our situation in our land. And there is no family that wasn't affected in sixty-seven to seventy Biafran genocide massacre, no family. I know my lost, I know my lost people and like each and everyone of them. We are happy we have some veterans amongst us here and we salute their courage. It is our determination while we encourage you, we encourage ourselves. And I came and I saw all of you here today, it's an encouragement for me personally. And of course, those who are witnesses, these very, very um, members of the director of state, when we will report back to the viewers, they will also corroborate what we are seeing here today. I am encouraging you that you must, I will, I will stress the word, you must remain dedicated as you have always been. And focus, eyes on the ball. Do not let yourselves be distracted. Distraction is a tool of the enemy. Distraction is a tool by which they want to, they will, you know, those who study Machiavellian system of operation, they will um, bring certain things and make it a topic. And when you're focused on that, spouting about that, their plan is going full speed without any person stopping them. IPOB is the only group of men and women who can secure the Biafran land and the Biafran driving from the marauding Jangawis. Our men, our men, our young men, our young women, may the land of Biafran bless them. I haven't seen, I haven't seen men so committed to the cause. And during the, during the war, the French minister said that, um, warriors fight like Biafrans. I can tell you that these young men in the bush, they have nothing much. They have as, even, even if you can compare to what those of our fathers had in sixty years, they have nothing much, but they are, only they are able to be, imagine when they will have something in their hand. And that is where we're coming, that is where our role comes in. That is where I ask all of you here, do never relent in supporting these young men and women because they are our backbone. They are the last line of our defense and we must never allow them to fall down or be in need or in want of missionaries or implement for their work. The Chukwabia, bless all of you as we continue on this very journey. IPOB, I said something before our HOS has been, that when you, when you see an Euro three, you can't beat, even if it is an accident, you like it, try to fetch a firewood for it because you don't climb there every day. How many of us have climbed Euro three before? So, when you shoot, we are saying you are highly welcome with your cabinet and your leadership. We stand with you and we say love may continue. All Biafran. Next, our next one is uh, our national coordinators, both present and past. So, I have my question, our national coordinator, Mazze Nice, Mokuru.
Today, we will not forget, before we take comments from our leaders, both present and past, national coordinators from the UK Congress, we invite our deputy. His usual presentation, why he does that and why our deputy was speaking. I was moved in my spirit, similar like what we did last year. To say, like uh, MC said, if you manage to climb Euro three, maybe nobody will understand here. Make sure, imagine no, of father, we just take a problem here and calm down with it. I'm honest. So here today, the presence of our HOD, I didn't know, the first time we've come to the UK, the first time we've meeting Lola in the flesh, we will retake our oath. And let nobody escape from that door like we did last year.
Yes, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And um, yeah, George, thank you very much for, once again, we are meeting this good time this year.
Red.
Third time, actually. Thank you so much. And uh, our European red, thank you so much. And Lola, second time again, thank you, good to see you. What a, what a great woman we have in our midst, you know, um, she have taken a lot for this, for this struggle. And um, I must appreciate, must appreciate her. Can we put a clap?
Of course, I want to also appreciate our national coordinator, uh, Dr. Loy, who are former UK national coordinator. And uh, of, um, of, of course, um, I will now hesitate to also recognize, um, recognize my uh, Zona Coordinator here, because they say that if there is a fast city, that is further fast city, the world that you're looking at. So I do have my Zona Coordinator here, Mazze CJ, the one that presented, uh, in the WN coordinator, of course, some of you that watch the video of war we did last week, you saw him there, he did a very nice job by making sure that Dublin hosted our uh, HOD very well and uh, as you can see, he was in a, a good hand and we appreciate him for that. And uh, that will show you, men Oyendu will come out, you will see more greater things than what you saw last week from there. Alright, thank you very much, once again, all of you who have stayed in this trouble with us for very, very long time and still remaining faithful, as I always say, remember strong, very, very strong, remember strong, it's very, very important to you understand this, that what we're pursuing is a, a life-changing uh, movement. So, and um, if you don't understand it, you will think uh, it's like other social, cultural organization you have been with in the past. This is a nation we have, we had before and it was extinguished and now we are trying to restore status. So, and um, whatever that have happened in the past and all the invasion you saw in the last four years, I think I, I want to believe Chukwabia, I'm allowed that to happen so that the strong men will come forward, as our leader always says. And uh, you are the strong men and women and children that have come forward to restore Biafran. Can we put a, an apology out here? So we have come very, very far. As you all know, it's very important to you understand that as we are here, we are not here to command anybody, please underline that. We are here to restore Biafran that was taken away from us, our identity that was stolen from us for many years. And the understanding and cohesion is very, very important. When you are in IPOB, I'll always remember that whatever you are doing in IPOB, you are doing it for yourself. Because if you realize that, that you're doing it for yourself, you will never allow anything to destroy what you are doing for yourself and for your family. That's why you see a lot of people who have fizzled out in the last four years because they do not understand the reason why they are in IPOB. They think it's like other organizations that have been there. And they don't understand the principles and values of movement and things that they need absolutely discipline. It doesn't matter who is sitting at the top. We never ever believe that Mazze Nama Kano will be beat or kidnapped in the manner that he was beat. And none of us were prepared to take this burden, even the wife, thinking the chief wasn't prepared for this kind of uh, you know, situation we find ourselves. But we want to prove to the enemy they have, you know, they have failed. Oyendu have done a lot of work before he was kidnapped and they didn't know about that. IPOB is the only organization that have faced this kind of, you know, vicious attack, if you like, and they survived it. And my leader states knows that they did not destroy IPOB by kidnapping Mazze Nama Kano. Their mission was, was to kidnap Mazze Nama Kano, this organization would be like every other organization, even social, cultural group they have, you know, mess around with. Remember when they had Ohanes Zendigu, twenty nineteen, they were doing their, their Jamboree election. And uh, Ohanes Zendigu, when the young one was Biafran, the way he scored, they gave another Ohanes Zendigu in Abuja. See, so that kind of thing, they, is what they tried to do in IPOB, thinking that they have succeeded. But today, they have seen that IPOB can never be destroyed. And it's all about because you yourself know what you want and you know what you're pursuing. We don't need too many people, there are people who are saying that, um, man, our HOD was in Ireland last week, someone we are asking, was saying something that he doesn't believe in IPOB, that it's only, you know, it doesn't matter how many we are, you know, they need, we need power. And I wish that I could have responded directly that time, but the question was sent to HOD. Better, let me say something. If two Amines can be only four or two people and sack a whole entire community, then what do you think about this multitude of Biafrans who are here, this IPOB who are here? So we are not many, we are many, you see how we struggle. And as, as I said, I thank Chukwabia that Oyendu did not command IPOB to engage in any form of confrontation before his kidnapping, it would have been a disaster, would have been a huge disaster. So we thank Chukwabia that what happened, happened and the leaders have been marked and we are moving forward. For sure, Mazze Nama Kano must be released, he has committed no offense. And as I always say, people who misinterpret what I said in some of my programs, we want to let the enemy know, as they are knowing it today, holding Mazze Nama Kano cannot stop IPOB restoring Biafran. So they are wasting their time and they have discovered it lately when they called off their. They have known of this, witness, mass witness, uh, excuse me. And I, I don't know and I, I'm not aware, I'm here. So they have ended up now not aware of anything Mazze Nama Kano have committed as an offense, unless the one we don't know. And they, under this leadership, Mazze Chikirizim and HOD, uh, US, as I, as I said, as I meant to say, managed to make sure that this IPOB are well coordinated in the absence of Mazze Nama Kano, even with the amount of invasion we have in IPOB. Nobody can set a pest for IPOB. Those who tried on social media today, who want to request the invasion that we have defeated, I think they have taken a look at it now. Because IPOB treatment knows no bounds. If you mess up here, your guys will revolt. Anyone mess up, it doesn't matter how much you have committed in IPOB, IPOB will revolt. So that is how far this movement has gone and you know, whatever IPOB started, they never go back on it. This is the mindset we want to insert in our people, go to back home, so that this Biafran we are trying to restore cannot be one man's show. People will determine, people will observe the government, people will say the opinion, people will report it against the government if they will go against the will of the people. IPOB.
One Family.
That's why I think Biafran is taking this time to be restored. If we have gone before now, I want you to take a look, sit back, some of you who are real hardcore members now, sit back and look at the invasion we had in the last four years, what happened? Uh, you know, that, that, that taught us something, that gave me different view of our people. our people. We thank to both Gabyama, that some of you who understand that manage to stay put, know that this is an invasion and we have defeated them now.
Yes sir
All day
All day
Biafra
Freedom
We help you
Now that's why you can support nice, even ordinarily press release, if you're not sure you should nice it. Did anybody inform me about the meeting, did anybody point to the leadership? That you are now critically, you know, looking into what is being presented to you, to know if it suits you. Anybody telling you that I P O B leadership is disobeying Onyendu Mazinam Meccano, let me just make this very clear now, some of you that are here because we expected to hear one or two things from the leadership. Anybody telling you that I P O B leadership is disobeying Onyendu Mazinam Meccano? Anybody telling you that I P O B leadership is disobeying Mazinam Meccano, that is not true. And I have said this before, what the enemy is working so hard on is to disconnect Mazinam Meccano from this organization, this is I P O B organization. All these four years of hard work, we didn't expect to kidnap Mazinam Meccano and now begin to work on them, his followers, is to disconnect him, to get him to say one thing and then if there will be no I P O B, they will not face him. They know that the backbone of Mazinam Meccano is the leadership and the I P O B. And that's why you see all this blue ha ha, even this second last badge now that you're seeing all over the place, is just to get people to judge some this leadership. And now, let me make this very clear in summary. Whatever message that the I P O B leadership gets from Mazinam Meccano, since they don't have direct access to him, it is the job of the leadership to filter that message because the source where it's coming from is not really 100% verified. So the leadership have to filter it, one, where if it's safe for Mazinam Meccano, based where it is and also if it's good for the movement and the public that we are representing Because that message can be corrupted from the angle that they are sending it from. And if you carry that message directly without a leadership filtering it, that will be an enemy to the movement. So while we are making this very open to you, so that when the enemy comes and begging all this, they don't obey Mazinam Meccano, there is only the message is that they disobey them, forget about that. What we are doing here is for the interest of our people. That's all, no personal interest. We let whatever we are doing in the last three weeks now go from one country to another, we get that some of us know that is the busiest time for anybody who is working in there and we abandon shelter from it, yeah, somebody will be actually saying that the leadership are enjoying themselves. And these people who are complaining about this, you don't even see them in an event like this and they are the one now putting on the camera telling you what is happening inside the meeting, do yourself, we are part of, doesn't matter, it doesn't happen. So on this note, this I P O B we are talking about, we are like dead, we don't have any reverse gear. We don't retreat. We don't surrender. We don't back down. And this Biafra is a song. This Biafra is going to be a song.
He say
I P O B
One Family
I P O B
One Family
One Family
I P O B
One Family
I P O B
I P O B
One Family
I P O B
I P O B
I P O B
I P O B
Allumeli
Allumeli
Yes
Allumeli
I P O B
One Family
One Family
I P O B
Biafra
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 They won't, they will do much in there.
I P O B
One Family
I P O B
One Family
One Family
I P O B
Are we ready? Are we ready?
We are ready
Please can I ask Chief Ndoké and the team to suspend entertainment, particularly our cohort convention for now, please. This is an A G M, seriously, I'm not, I'm not joking, I'm not saying, I love the A G M. This is an A G M, we are here for serious business. Our H O D made a declaration, a call to duty and said, we must, must be ready. And I said that was moved in the spirit, I didn't even realize that the spirit went ahead because it was actually in the program, but we skipped it because of time. But I like it, skip Holy Communion and you expect him to go to heaven. So are we ready?
Yes sir
We will retake our oath, I'll come out and show the example, we did last year, umu woke, umu chalukun, umu wa, umu gukun subadu, but ono olaga, opua la naja, no socks. While we are doing that, it might take us a few minutes to do that, but if we are ready, it shouldn't. Let me recognize, as we talked about our national leaders, past and present, the former, the first I P O B UK national coordinator, Dr. Chukuma Egeba, who I invited and I had a chat with him, he was very delighted to be part of it. He was also part of our delegation to the funeral of the great friend of Biafra, renowned author Fred Ferside. Thanks to Dr. Justizuka, she knows who linked us up and he is today in our house, Dr. Egeba. Please, Dr. Egeba, if you may stand up for recognition and say a word or two, your beloved Biafrans, uh, we need people like you to come back into the fold and many group people too that are, for one reason or the other, let this family should come back. There was no one should make it, there were. And I am humbled to be in your list, just because those people like you that we are following, it's not easy to be in.
Thank you very much, the national coordinator. I P O B
One Family
I P O B
One Family
One Family
I P O B
Um, I must be, I want to ask to do, so please forgive me, um, I am not one of the best public speakers. And that is why when we started Radio Biafra Friday in 2009, and we discovered that our leader, my very friend, very best friend, I make no apology, I am, he is my best friend and has been and will be and will always be. We discovered his oratory skill, that was why we said he should be our leader, he should be the director of Radio Biafra. And then we continued to back him up and give him all the necessary support. And this is one, one of the thing, eh, on reguakrehasi, na la Biafra, inhelezi rodo, oba? Eh, just think about that phrase, na la Biafra, inhele, everything is complete, na la Biafra. We to respect, mandoma, mahoma, mahinon job, ai giye, mm, ni na, obu de ne we doma, nan do job, they are not complete because, gachon doma, ai mele, no, gachopand, ai mele laha. Um, let me not digress too much, there are a few things that I want to touch up and I don't know how much time I have and I know that we don't have the all the time in this world. As I said, I am not one of the best of public speakers, but I have my ideas, that's why um, I have ideas and I have been in this problem and will be in this problem and will die in this problem. As we always say in the Radio Biafra, those days, if you are here and you are not prepared to pay the ultimate price, please, the door is there for you to take it out. I say, no apologies, if you are here and you are not prepared to pay the ultimate price for the freedom we are fighting for, the door is there for you. I am here, I have been here and will always be here. Because um, many of you may not know me, but few that knows me, I always say that, ode na gite, mordi gare bo na aga, oga pey di na aga, ike wea, yesi duka mi ke, tuehebe, yebi duka, na aga pey bo na aga. And that is what is happening and that's what is happening here in this hour's struggle. Om regu, so many dead hamba, aga hamba, for one thing or the other. Now, um, let me say that few things I want to get out. The word message and messenger. I want you people to, uh, please to make note of this, message and messenger. Biafra is the message. And all of us here, including our Onyendu, our leader, my best friend, we are all messengers. It is important you know the difference or understand the meaning of a message and a messenger. Biafra is the message and we are all the messengers. And if a messenger tries to be the message or try to corrupt the message, there will be a problem. If a messenger want to be the message, sabotage comes in. If a messenger want to disrupt, distort the message, there will be a problem. Tika edo say is a messenger. Mazinam Meccano itself knows that is a messenger, you people have heard him say it before, he is not, and I'm happy it has been repeated, repeated here. We move in at the Cavi tomorrow, hundred more, even more than there will turn up. Let example what is happening in um, let example what is happening in the Middle East between Israel and Israel, uh, the Palestinians. Israel is doing everything possible to eliminate one out of this Palestine. Some of us here, we are Christians, we know the difference, the history, the meaningful message and so on and so forth about the Palestine and the Israelites, uh, that I'm not want to get into there, but what I want you all to know and that's to some extent directly or indirectly applies to us, is this issue of Palestine and Israel. Apart from the United States, Israel is one of the most advanced, has one of the most advanced military in the whole world. And look at the enclave where the Palestinians are. Israel have done everything possible to get them out of the way, but it is impossible, why? There's the people and there's an adoration. Even if you kill, because one Palestinian you kill, ten more will spring up, twenty more will spring up, hundred more will spring up. So how many will you kill to eliminate them? And they go, mandanamam, mandanamamba, they are still there, that's who we are. You, you cannot wish the Biafrans away, just as the Israelites, we to respect, they cannot wish Palestine and the Palestinians away. So the leaders should be, I am um, compressing everything so that I don't overstay my welcome. So please, whatever you are doing in the name of Biafra, remember that you are a messenger. Remember that Biafra is the message and ask yourself, if a messenger is called upon to give account of the message he is delivering, what may, the water cat will you give? In other words, whatever you are doing in the name of Biafra, wa akota. And remember that you are not just serving Biafra, we are believing, remember that there are what, five million people that have died in the name of Biafra and their spirits are woven all over the world. You are, if you want them to rest in peace, we must restore Biafra. If we don't restore Biafra, this, they, those who have died from 1967 up to today, their soul can never rest in peace. And we can only have a peaceful place for them to rest if we restore Biafra. Now, about, uh, this is talk about uh, leadership and uh, my daughter, that's what I, nobody but I, 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 I know her very, very well, the only difference is that all me, Onyendu, everything about, there's nobody here that knows her better than I do. Neither does anybody know our leader better than I do. The only difference is that um, my daughter and the, are in the other room, that's what I, the only area I am not involved, I don't know, with every other thing, I know. Not just them, every members of the Meccano family, including their parents, well, they are so rest in peace. I have not yet to tell the story of my mom with the Meccanos, but what I'm saying is, whatever we are doing in the name of Biafra for them, the leaders, and that's, I want to bring in the word unity. You can express, define, have different understanding of the word unity. Whichever way you express understanding of it, don't forget the word Igbo, don't forget the word Biafra. We are Biafrans, we are Igbo's. There are certain things that makes us think that the world don't understand. There is a lot of mystery among the Igbo race, among Biafrans, that the world don't know and that that is what, one of the things that is keeping us. And that is the reason why even today, they don't understand. Ndebe en ebeha, if you understand what I mean, ebeha not, ndebe no ebeha, they don't understand and they have not forgiven us for what we did to them and we don't care. I don't want to go into history, if you want to know more, you know, because let me just say in a passing, it is the Igbo nation, the Igbo people, the Biafrans that gave British the first time in all their entire imperial colonial history. And for that, we have not done it. And for that, we have not forgiven, and for that, we have not forgiven us, and we don't care. We don't care. So, talking about unity, it is important. Uh, our leader is being decastitated, and we need to unite and fight. Whether he is going to come alive or not, we hope he will be, because in this year, they would be very stupid to allow anything to happen to him. In this year, they would be very stupid to allow anything to happen to him, in fact, they would do everything to make sure that nothing happens to him. I don't think, well, uh, some people will say, well, after all, if we now, after all that, and other people have that, well, um, thank you very much for repeating the sentence, Kaya. Uh, wande kainasuna, uh, anapa, ojinina hishe. So that it is important that we maintain that unity, it is very, very important. From the leaders, from the people, from the followers, we all need it. The fight against us is not only from outside. The most dangerous fight, struggle, in within the, our struggle, is the enemies from within. Like, look how, um, the family did not, you can imagine, there's a two that is a family members, as a whole, they don't know who is who. And if some family member could they be married, they would, and you would drink it with that person, they don't know who they were, they will not know. It would, there was no house, you would think. That's why they say that, uh, the enemy within is more dangerous than the enemy from outside. If you allow yourself to beat the enemy from within, well, uh, when the time we do listen, ingeche na tell, omu ye na hoke, maapa na ti bo sina, uh, anane, uh, uh, wu na ga wamwam, anane le wamwam na he, and omu to manu nuu the difference, and then he have new graph here, be careful. Whatever you are doing in the name of Biafra, be careful. Be careful. The calls you make, there are some certain things, I, uh, listen, whatever I say, I take responsibility. My leader, my friend, we do have disagreements. We don't have disagreements, ideological difference, so it's not any other thing, it's, uh, uh, the chapter we will reconcile. We have, and this is why I said there's a lot we need to know about the people, about who we are as Ibo's and as Biafras. The history of what makes us different from other people. We have opinion, and we want to be her, we want to be the same and to be her, and that's why I'm in the woman now. Abia, aboko, ye woko manna, ono be uko je. Chiketo say cannot, uh, stop you from, and you say, and the, uh, omu ye gen duku, yes. If you have problem with the leadership, and this is where our Ibo describes. Omu ni ndu, omu ye say, mama, ye olepo na, dapanu, umu te koreteke, uzo di buya. And I need to tell people that, if you have a leader, and you cannot look your leader in the face and tell him where he's going wrong, you don't have a leader. And if that leader cannot listen to you, you don't have a leader. So it is very, very important to notice, the leadership should know. We Ibo's, we have opinion, and we want to express it, it is not pride, or we high war. Anyway, because of time, yes, I'm excited, uh, exciting. Well, now, another thing I want to, I've said, I've mentioned it before, you asked, I said, why do we, why are you here? Why are you here? What are you expecting?
Freedom!
There are some people who are here, not just for freedom, with rule respect. There are some people who want to know, omu eka leke, atu eka leke here, omu repositions, omu repositions, and do you know what? Mazitiketo say, I, I don't envy you, oh ha. I don't envy you, neither do I envy the national coordinator, Onyendu Maala, here's the yoko. If you want to know, have a test, do you know what it means to be called to every second? Eh, as a leader, you expect him to have the solution to all problems? Ah, so please. Only me, only me, only expectation, omu maapa na na wunna, they have their own families, in addition to this trouble they are in. Then, um, I have said briefly about, um, ideas and their ideology, I've said it here. IPOB, whatever they do within Namdekan, it doesn't matter, we are here to stay, and Biafra must be restored. And it cannot be restored without the effort of every one of us. Remember, a messenger must walk towards the